Planning board, the planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. Pursuant to the DLGL. From earlier this year, I can't remember the citation, I'll throw it in my head. Do we have any comments from anybody in the public on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, moving forward into minutes for acceptance, we're looking. At the July twenty seven, twenty twenty three minutes. Can I get a? Motion to accept those and?
I didn't mean to read them, so I apologize, I thought I had a comment on it and I just need to grab them. You don't mind?
Point of order. I participated in that vote for the cell tower, it's outlined in the minutes. Would I be eligible to vote on the minutes in any way, the motion?
Great question.
Or anything, or should I sit here with my mouth closed?
Uh, you can absolutely comment and provide feedback on the minutes. Um, I don't think you get a vote on them, but you absolutely get, uh, you get feedback.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, by custom, we've, uh, we've always done the associate member as, um. Fully entitled to any discussion as, uh, as a grant member, just not active for the vote on it.
I appreciate your indulgence, Chair.
Mister Chairman, are you in, in session?
We're in session.
But isn't he activated in the absence of John and Bill?
No.
Only for the purpose of special permits. Uh-huh, that's something new if we do. I tried, I tried.
I mean, it would be good.
Wants the vote.
I just wanna know what my responsibilities are. Madam Select Woman.
Ah, okay, no, I, I, uh, yeah, I am gonna have to provide some feedback there.
Okay, well, we can do that in the discussion section.
Yep.
So with that said, can, can I get a motion?
I present a motion that we accept the minutes of, uh, July the twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. As they have been written up, very well done, always. Um, first to accept them.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
You having a first and a second, uh, discussion?
The only discussion I have is, is there is an item here that I still owe, uh, and that is the, um. To look into the item that has to do with, um. Uh, what Nate had requested during this, uh, meeting that we had, which is basically. Just make sure that I can verbalize this here correctly. So he said here, Nate, uh, the town administrator has inquired about the current zoning, uh, bylaw requirement for the special permit application on all co-located equipment on communication towers. Um, I've now looked at probably twenty different, uh, municipalities. And I'm trying to come up with sort of like a matrix.
Okay.
I will not have this ready until, uh, a later time, but I just wanna give you a quick update on this, has nothing to do with the acceptance, but I wanna give you a. It's a, an interjection and a, and a quick update on this here.
Okay, well, it's, uh, it's gonna get brought up for discussion, uh, pretty significantly for under four B, which is going to be D L T A planning assistance. Uh, I'm actually gonna, Nate has an item that he's here for, uh, which is item five C, I'm actually gonna merge four B and five C. Get there, take those together, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh, which is gonna have a pretty discussion on that. So any, uh, any other feedback on the minutes?
No.
All right, so not, uh, not hearing any, call and vote.
You start your eye.
Jack eye.
And the chair is eye, the minutes are accepted. All right, so moving down on the agenda here, we were expecting to have, uh, an A and R for tonight, but I don't think the rest of the documents came in.
Didn't come in.
So we're gonna pass that over. So we're on to four B, so we're getting right into the meat of it. So. For the purpose of the public, uh, there are these things called D L T A grants and they're direct local technical assistance. And it's a program that's funded by the state where we work with our regional planning organization to, um, to work on. A whole bunch of different projects related to zoning, economic growth, development, all of those kinds of things. There's a bunch of stuff that falls in under it. And each year we apply and we get assistance for it and these, um. These work grants are backed by real money from the state, but they're, they're actually pretty substantial dollar amounts. Uh, the ones that we've gotten over the last couple of years have been seven thousand, twenty thousand, thirty five thousand. They're, they're pretty substantial grants that are being used for this, um. Uh, planning hours don't come cheap, uh, so. The actual application process is going to start, um. It's gonna start early next year, but we've kind of ended up in a place in the past where, well, we frankly waited too long to really start having the discussion. Because putting together even an application for a D L T A grant, uh, it takes a lot of thought. And it, it takes somebody speaking on behalf of the planning board and we should be working and looking at this as a board. So tonight I wanna kick off the discussion of what we think is important for us to look at for, um. For this next round of D L T A funding. Uh, I have a couple suggestions, ideally the output of what I would like to get out of this would be a list. And then I'd like to take that list and probably in our next meeting to give us all a little bit of time to think about it. And actually do a forced ranking matrix of it where we all assign a weight to where we think each individual project is. And we'll do all members on, on the weights, um, so that everybody's opinion gets heard. Ultimately, that output will then be accepted by a, a vote. Which the associate member won't be allowed to participate in, but the associate member won't be allowed to give the rank, so that way we get everybody's voice heard. Um, and, uh, and then that's what we'll use for guidance to, uh, to put together. Our, um, D L T A assistance grants for this year and hopefully by doing that. We'll come up with projects that are much better scoped than we've submitted in the past, which is going to help us ask for help, uh, find alternative funding sources. Get different grants for it possibly and, uh, and just make the projects easier for us to manage and easier for our partners to manage with us. Um, because going in with an open-ended project like we've done before, it doesn't work so great. So that's kind of a kickoff to where we're at. So, uh, I ju- I guess just to get a couple thoughts and ideas on the table. Um, there's been some things that we've talked about in the past that were previously on. Uh, the actual planning board project list that we've looked at on things that are important to us in the long term. Uh, and one is a, uh, a revision of our marijuana by law. Um. Because there seems to be a pretty popular, the, the. The majority of the board, uh, seems to share the belief that it could have been written a little more thoughtfully than it. Than it was, well, that's not true, but that. Having the benefit of the hindsight that we currently have, we can write it more thoughtfully than the folks who wrote it originally could have. Because they didn't have experience and were just making it up as they went, because they were the first people to do it. So, um, I think that's something that we should consider having on the list. Um, I would also like us to consider a, um, a revision of our wireless communications, uh, article. And, uh, and the reasons for that is. Right now, as we haven't written, we have to do a full special permit for anybody who comes in and tries to do co-located equipment. And that is challenging, um, it's gonna be challenging for us, it's gonna be unnecessarily expensive for some of the applicants. Um, right, and has the town administrator for comment?
Thank you, and this is actually affecting us right now, cuz in our. Partnership with the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, we're getting ready to write an R F P for the new municipal tower. But we have to get all of this additional legal assistance in making sure the language is broad enough to meet certain requirements. So it's definitely something that we should be looking at over the next few years additionally, so that I don't have to ask again. For the chairs and the board's time, I would like to thank you for doing this. In the beginning of my tenure here, it cut, one of the first things that came across my desk was, hey, do you wanna apply for a D L T A grant? So I called Chris and Mark and a couple other people and said, well, what, what do we do? So this will just be a good thing to have as guidance and laundry list of the ideas moving forward that we can update as time goes. Thank you.
So that, um, that segments to, I think, the third one that, that I wanna open up discussion on. Uh, which is our overall special permit and site plan review process. I think best practices have kind of evolved over the years since, uh, since the town last took a look at this. And, um. There's, there's a good argument that we should have a standalone site review process. And there's also a pretty good argument that we should have an expedited special permit review process for less intensive uses. Because as of, um, as of right now, it's not uncommon for the cost of a special permit to be ten, twenty thousand dollars. And there's a whole category of businesses that we're constructively prohibiting because they're not capital intensive uses. And they're not high-impact uses to the environment or the neighbors. But if it's not capital intensive and you're putting a twenty thousand dollar barrier up in front of somebody doing it. In the commercial district, then you're effectively preventing them from doing it. So I think we need to take a look at that process and I think it's also the kind of thing that M R P C is good at. Because, um, the things that they're good at is they look at a whole bunch of different zoning laws because they work with a lot of communities. So if you ask them, like, hey, who has the best version of this that we should try to mirror, that we should use for inspiration, they're pretty good at helping, helping us find that. When it comes down to needy gritty stuff where it's like, who knows the town? We know the town better than any consultant coming in, like, they're not gonna know the ins and outs of the community and the business community. So that's on us, but as far as just a straight administrative process, that's really a good opportunity for them to be able to help us, so. Those are the few that, that I wanted to start the discussion off with and, uh, I also wanna just call, see who else has. Things that they think need provision and also ask if there's comments on those three. I'll take a comment.
Thank you, Mike Stoff, I'd love to have a break. Uh, Mister Chair, two questions, the D L T A, what is the application deadline for that? So what timeframe are you looking at?
It's usually in February.
Oh, so months away.
Yeah, we have, we have some space for it, but with, with the way we only meet a, a couple times a month and with the way business has been slow lately. We might only meet once a month, so there aren't many meetings to get there.
And the second question is, you cited, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars, how are those fees? Developed or calculated that we get to twenty K for a somewhat insignificant project or?
So as it is now, everybody has to submit stamped plans for pretty much everything and, uh. We also have to get those reviewed, so when you start looking at somebody writing them and then somebody peer editing them, you get there really pretty quick.
Okay, I mean, if they're stamped plans, that means they're probably a bit of construction intensive, so that, which seems to be. Opposite of what you said, you know, you have ones that are not intent, you know, not construction or capital proven intensive yet. You know, I'm kinda hearing two different things there, that's all.
Yeah, we, we only have the intensive pathway right now, there is no other pathway in town, other.
Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, good questions.
So a good example of that would be the, in the wireless co-location. Where wireless co-location right now does require a full-blown special permit. And, uh, if you think about, for example, a cell tower that has already gone through a fairly intensive process in terms of the building of this cell tower. Co-location of an antenna which may incorporate not only the additional antennas that are put up there, but in addition to that, say for example, a. Alt, uh, like a generator, uh, for that particular may have less of a requirement than the full-blown. Uh, antenna itself, because the structure is there.
Mm-hmm.
The height requirements are there, the F I A requirements have already been met, the only thing that you're really looking at here is, is. We're putting an antenna up and we're adding some ancillary facilities that are basically there to support that particular antenna. So I think I'm, I'm in full support of that. Uh, are you looking for, at this point in time, for items that we should be reviewing or just the general concept of?
Item.
Because you mentioned the marijuana, you mentioned the wireless.
Yep, items that we should be reviewing.
I'm, I'm going to harp with Mister Nate again. On my, my question that I thought this week we're supposed to get something back on the battery energy storage system. Did we?
No.
Okay, the reason I'm asking this here is just simply because depending on what comes back there, we may need help there.
Yeah.
If it comes back fine, then no issue, but if there is something that the Attorney General. Has a question or concern, then I think we ought to, we ought to review that.
Barring speaking disparagingly on anyone, I will say that the town clerk is now working on it.
Sure, okay, no, she had mentioned that I think today was the date that she was supposed to get something back.
She'll hear something soon, she's actively, there was a time where we weren't as actively pursuing it.
No, I absolutely get it, and I'm not harping on the fact that the town clerk is doing her due diligence, if anything, it's just, did the, did the A G come back with, with, with something?
Not to my knowledge, if it did come in today.
It, she, she had a communication with him yesterday.
Okay.
And it has to do with the, uh. Uh, the, the printed copy of what appeared in the newspaper.
Yeah, but that wasn't for best, though. That was for the zoning regulations from this year.
No, no. No, this, I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about best right now. Um, anyway, so she's, she's going back and forth with them about exactly what documentation they need on the advertising notice.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll leave that as something we may need to consider.
All right, so if you would just asterisk that one in there.
Yep.
Thank you.
What else, the folks have a sense that we need to look at or additional comments on, on those ones?
Nothing that, when, um, when you had asked for something, I definitely immediately thought the wireless. Um, bylaw needs some help and then marijuana too, so I agree. Those two are big.
That's all, let's move to the second.
Do we, do we still, I, I know that this last time around, we had a, we had a good go-around with some modifications on the large-scale solar. Um, but my understanding was is that we felt those were just. Making sure that we tightened it up a bit, but we felt that there was significant review that still needs to take place, so I would like to. Consider adding that.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, cuz we, we did scale it back, we did get a draft bylaw from, I think it was Jennifer at M R P C that was working on it, but it. It didn't work with what we had, uh, and. Yeah, you're right, we did just end up tightening it up and then tabling that, so that would need to come back. Uh, what else?
Do we need this old today?
Well, I'd like to at least get, um. I would like to get a preliminary list of these large strategic items, like if they're small, like, oh, we should make some changes to some of the uses in the town center. Um, I don't think that that is in rise to the level of a D L T A project. Um, because frankly, I actually do think we should talk about that in the near future, uh, where exactly the town center zone is and. Um, what uses are allowable in it. Cuz we have a whole draft package for a revised town center zone from M R P C, but it. Uh, the E D C asked for it and received it, it wasn't a planning board project, it was an economic development committee project. And it came back just too broad-sweeping of an item and it wouldn't be passable in the form that it's currently in because it. It creates like a design standards review committee and, um. Uh, a whole bunch of stuff that I think will draw some pretty significant political, uh, opposition unless it's made. And redone in a way where. It keeps Hubbardson and Hubbardston, it kinda takes into account of who we are as a community, so.
So one additional item I would like to potentially down the road pr- present, and it's not one that I think we are ready to do that, yes, with the D L T A. Um, yes, I think there needs to be an internal discussion, if you remember, I think it was about two months ago, we had a couple of gentlemen here. Who were, uh, discussing the Pitcherville Road and the subdivision.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we have a very small section for subdivision phasing. I'm wondering whether or not that is up to snuff. For us to be able to truly accommodate, uh. Development plans as such as the ones that they are maybe looking at and the town may be looking at, you know, for their own, uh. For their own property.
It's not, um. That, that's a good, that was actually, that was actually one of, uh, Mark's first things that he had on when he came in, I was like, hey. Last time you guys have looked at and considered updating your subdivision rules and a long, long, long time ago is the answer to that, so.
Yeah, so article, right, right now I have it, saw the, the old one here, it's article fourteen, sub- subdivision phasing, it's only got like four sections. It is very skinny on the bone. I think it's worth, uh, review. But before, again, just looking at it from the D L T A, uh, advantage perspective, I think we're up to internally discuss this here.
Yeah.
And make a, an assessment of it ourselves and see whether or not this makes sense, I mean, I'm thinking that the board will have their own opinions on this here.
Yeah.
We can all bring it up, okay?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense and that. Uh, that kinda ties to, I think, where there were some issues with the town center project, like that was. That was turned over to M R P C as something that was way too open-ended, like there weren't like clear specifications and clear goals. Um, so the deliverables just came out, a copy of a completely different town that was not on par with us, so. We have to be able to have. A clear idea of what we want before we ask somebody to create it for us, so.
Correct, thank you.
What else? Would be, what is, what would be nice, like not even on the, is something that we absolutely have to do right now, but what's just like a stretch goal, like. Would be a nice to have a change here and bring in the T A in on this question.
How does one say, like, zoning feasibility assessment? Like, there needs to be some sort of commercial property outside of that one orange, orange circle. I don't really know where that would go and I'm hesitant to bring on more assessments cuz we have them coming out of our ears.
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth adding to the list because that. I think that's similar to what I was talking about with some of the small changes we should probably make to the town center where I don't know if it's gonna rise to a D L T A level.
Yeah.
But it might just be something that we debate internally propose, but now's the time to get these ideas on the list, so. I mean, I think we should look at, um. Uh, I think it's pulled in on the special permit process, but I also think we need to look at, um. We need to take a, a little bit of a fresh look at our allowable uses. So like, should somebody really have to go through a full special permit process because they have five dogs? Um, probably not, but that's the way our law currently is.
Tell me about it.
So, I think we need to take a look at, at some of. At some of those two and that could be a good D L T A project because one of the things that's important when you start making. Large-scale changes to allowable uses is you have to have, um. You have to have the research to back it up, so you have to be going out and talking to the public and getting an idea of what the sentiment is ahead of time and. Doing all of that stuff and that's good work for an R P O to help us with.
And for the good of the order, I'd like to throw out another acronym with D L T A and that's K I S S, keep it simple silly. Because the M R P C has given us some, some difficult times, so I would. Prefer to give them things that we're almost there and we just need a little bit of help pushing us over the finish line.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and I, I think we did, um, I think a good example of it going well is with the rural opportunity overlay.
Yes.
Um, because we, we got it pretty far ourselves and then really just got some, some expert feedback from them and. Kinda got it the rest of the way.
And that was a win-win, cuz we got, as a municipality, what we needed and they got to put another ten thousand dollar feather in their cap and go and apply for more grants. Cuz at the end of the day, they need to keep their lights on as well.
Yep. How about other stuff? So. There's, there's something else that I wanna bring up and, yeah, I, I think it falls under this because it is an M R P C project. Um, I was just at a virtual meeting for the M R P C Trails Caucus. And, uh, there's this gentleman who's a trail advocate, his name is Dick O'Brien, he is looking to put together. A, um, a trail interconnectivity plan for eleven M R P C towns, us and, um. And Princeton being included in that and then the rest of the towns are all to the northeast. And what the current plan is, is that the overall grant that he's trying to apply for is a mass trails grant. Uh, which would be between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars, which means that essentially each town would be looking to get twenty five thousand dollars worth of trail interconnectivity planning out of it. Um, and the reason that comes up here at the planning board is because M R P C is a regional planning organization and this is a regional planning project and. Mass Trails Grants specifically are reimbursement grants and they also require towns or communities. Or whoever's applying for the grant to make a match, now the match is only twenty percent. But only twenty percent, when you're talking about something that's gonna be allocated to us at the rate of twenty five thousand. I mean, somehow we're gonna have to come up with, uh, five thousand dollars equivalent. There's a suggesting made that, um, that towns waive or, or turn back their G I S hours with M R P C. Which lately for us hasn't been an issue because Mark's awesome with G I S, so when we've had issues, he's done it, but Mark's not gonna be here forever. So, uh, it might be more of an issue in the future, um. There also, it also could somehow have an impact on what goes on with D L T A. Because if it doesn't work with Matt's Trails, maybe it tries to get funded another way, but, uh, but I thought it was worth bringing up in this. Particular area because it is an M R P C project and it is something that I think is pretty important to the town from an economic and long-term planning perspective. But, um. But we're pretty much just tracking it at this point to, to find out what's going on with it, it isn't something that we're directly involved in yet. So any other questions or thoughts or comments on that? I'll wait a few moments on this cuz it is brainstorming session, so. All right, so if anybody has anything pop into their mind, we can come back to this, um, and what I'm gonna do is we're gonna. Put this together and flesh it out a little bit and it's gonna be an agenda item on our next meeting and we're gonna actually put a rank to, uh, to these at the next meeting. So that's, uh, that's what we'll do with that. Moving next down the agenda, um. Let's actually take the order a little differently and let's go to master plan progress report with M R P C. Moving next down the agenda, um let's actually take the order a little differently and let's go to master plan progress report with MRPC. So Nate, Mark and I had a call with MRPC to talk about the status of the uh the master plan. Because there's still a couple of chapters that gotta be finished out in that. There's also still a couple of chapters that aren't quite up to the snuff that we expect. And um I think it was a pretty productive call. We came out of it with a a written plan and we had to nudge a little bit. But we got um we made it a little more incremental, I think is a fair word. Cause it Nate, can you help me out with this one?
So about six months ago, even a little bit before that, prior to leaving, my predecessor did receive from town meeting approximately six thousand dollars to work on the master plan. Upon arrival, it when I got here, the understanding like Mark actually put together a a nice little video of this conversation. Was that this money would be going to them, but it what the master plan was to be done by July thirty, by June thirty of this past year. So three, four months ago, that was not done. Not only was that not done, but we kind of, I'm gonna use the term got ghosted. So we went up the food chain and ended up speaking with the executive director. And had a conversation with the young planner who is towards the beginning of his career. That does end up being the issue at these regional planning organizations. Cause they take people on, kind of grind them and then they lose them and they go on and they do wonderful things elsewhere. But there are also the few people that don't make it. It's like an example of this is a young woman that did the town center bylaw shot at it and and this. But we are now back on track working with the with the MRPC. It is not a DLTA grant at this time, but my frustration and the frustration of the planning board and the entire town on the fact that by the time this is done, it will be time to do another master plan was duly noted. So he sent the implementation chapter over last week. I sent it out to a number of boarding committee chairs. A lot of it is either done or being worked on. So the master plan needs a few revisions and tweaks before it'll be brought to us. But I we have it on good word from the executive director that it's going to get done and it's going to get done timely.
So I guess just as a matter of background, so at some point it was a DLTA project and it just it didn't get done during the time window.
Two or three times.
Yeah, and it it ultimately started in twenty seventeen. And we're due to do a new master plan every ten years, so you do the math twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three and we're already six years into it. The uh the good news with it is the the planning board is the ultimate authority on it. It doesn't go to town meeting. It gets approved by a vote at the planning board, so we can open it up and we can edit it at any time that we want. Um that's not a great thing to do because it's better to just do a project and have it end instead of having it go on forever. But um but it does give us some flexibility in terms of what happens with it. Really where the problem comes is trying to get funding to do it over the next time because if you're like, well. How how do you even measure when our master plan was from? Like do you measure it like when the first two chapters were done in twenty eighteen? Or do you measure it from when the last two chapters are done in twenty thirteen? Like how do you even write that in a grant application to ask for money to redo it in four years? So.
Well, there's something to be said, Mr. Chair, that is is that um whatever has been completed more recently will probably be the most up to date and those are typically the hardest ones anyway. Um if we have to do it within the ten years, it's it's is it within the ten years of the completion of all of the chapters? Or or is it?
That's that's the question, yeah.
Yeah, but so the so the point I think we need to do here is is can we can we review this here in its entirety and say this is still relevant? Or do we need to take those items that were created back in two thousand and eighteen and I mean just bring them back and say this needs to be edited? And just break everything up to part so that we have a a valid master plan that from the start to the very end is something that we can all acknowledge and say this is as of today, so twenty twenty-three. Or twenty twenty-four, whenever this is finalized.
And besides inconvenience and planning progress, there's not anyone that's going to hold our feet to the fire on every ten years. Cause some towns go thirty years on the same master plan. I would not like to be one of those communities. But it's not something that we need to need to need to do in twenty twenty-seven if we can get it up to snuff this year.
So I guess the question here would be is is how much of a revision would it entail to bring it again from the beginning to the very end?
That's what we're waiting on.
Up up to the stuff. And if we can do that and say, look, by the time we go and give a final approval of this year, what we're actually approving is is everything in its entirety. And if there are some additional changes that we need to do, then let's do them again on those items that are potentially now either modified or obsolete. And bring those up to snuff and then just mark it i- in its entirety.
And that's what we're currently waiting on.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I were a Benton man, I don't know if I would say I'm completely positive that that's the way this is gonna go. Based on prior our prior working relationship, but knock on wood, I'm hoping.
So the the thing that makes me nervous about some of the existing chapters is that there are some sections in that that are really pretty important to some of the decisions we make as a public policymaking body. Like spec- and what I'm specifically referencing is some of the statistics related to land available for development. Um I've heard some some fairly compelling counter arguments to how the numbers are presented there. And and think that, well, they might not be reliable and having some of that recalculated and different methodologies looked at. Is actually a pretty meaningful amount of work, but like that's one specific area where uh where addressing it would make I believe a big difference in terms of how reliable they are for us as a policymaking body. Cause like what we do on what we do on like individual applications and permits, yeah, that has an effect. But like the conversation that we just had about like, well, what projects and bylaws do we look at? Like that has a fifteen, twenty year impact on the town. And the the information that we take in to make those decisions makes a difference. So like if it turned out that MRPC was just completely wrong on some of the affordable housing stock. Or some of the um or some of the land available for development calculations like. They they list that there's only about two percent of property in this town that is available for development without constraints. Um that that isn't already developed and I have some concerns about how that number is stated. And it makes a big difference how we approach things, like if that's true or if that number is actually double digits. That makes a big difference from a public policy standpoint, so I I think we need to get to some real answers on some of that too. Um uh Mark, have you had any thoughts on maybe those numbers?
Um well, no, I mean, I haven't done a I haven't sat down and done a thorough analysis. But I I suspect that some of them come with asterisks at a minimum.
Yeah.
Can can I ask for some clarification in terms of what your specific concerns are? I mean, if you were the ranges from two percent all the way up to potentially double digits, there must be a reason that you are thinking about this as as being such uh is 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 the source of information incorrect? Is the interpretation incorrect? Is it because there was not proper due diligence done? I mean, what's?
I think there's some questions in terms of how constraining the constraints are that that.
Can you give some examples, maybe?
I need to be looked at. Um like uh aquifer, the impact of aquifer uh protection. Which is one that we meant to add that we should add to that list because we're meaning to look at the aquifer protection zone. So add that to that earlier list. Um. So there are things like our aquifer protection rules that that create constraints on properties that aren't necessarily durable constraints. I think it is maybe a a way to word that.
So you're saying that they're based on potential changes in the way these aquifers are accounted for at this point in time? And potentially with climate changes that are going to be changes deltas in this here, already are?
And what and what our rules are for it. So like a um. Let me take up an example here.
Well, I'm not thinking about the aquifer, I'm sorry, the the aquifer bylaw itself. I'm thought I'm thinking more in terms of the the chapters of the bylaw. I mean, are you are you indicating that the chapters of the bylaw are incorrect because the assumptions that they've made?
Yeah, I think we need to look at the underlying assumptions on what gets bucketed into uh developable. Developable with some constraints, developable with partial constraints and then totally constrained land. Uh I don't know that that analysis was done properly based upon uh some constituent feedback I've received since uh really kind of figuring out how all of this works.
That's a fair, that's fair.
Um and I think that would be good to know because that that is dependent upon how you break down that number. It makes it look like the only developable land that is in town anywhere is in the sand pits. So I just think we need to get a better handle on it because I I don't think that's really the case. But I don't, I think it's a question we need to ask. I don't think it's a question we have to thoroughly debate tonight. Although we're gonna have to go and improve all of this after the fact and then that's what we're gonna have to debate it more thoroughly.
And my fear is at what point do they just say, hey, you know what, there, we're done? Like this has been going on for seven years, do what you may with this.
At some point, we should also just do that too, to just calm it over a bit. My my thought, assuming the board supports this, is pretty much no matter uh what comes out of this revision, we just need to end this. Like we can't have this going on for a decade. Um at some point, we just need to call it done. And if if the board feels like we need to open up and revise chapters, we should just do it because we have the authority to. And not have this as an open project anymore. So I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts on that or. So uh I know that's not a super exciting update, but uh I think we're moving in the right way. We're gonna keep that on the agenda going forward and hopefully uh next month we'll have a exciting conclusion. Um next down the list, unless anybody has anything else, next down the list is invoice approvals.
Can I give one update before?
Oh, yes.
The ultimate winner of the me not paying them was the planning board. Because you guys are the only people that could possibly spend planning money allocated at town meeting, so so that'll be good for you.
Which is good because we haven't previously had any kind of mechanism for paying for legal reviews or um consultant support, which we desperately understand. Yeah, I have another item related to that, but that'll come up under items not anticipated by chair, so um. But that said, we have an invoice here. Um it's for the industrial tower application. Uh it's in the drive for anyone who needs to look at it again. Uh the invoice is for seven seventy-three, which is the remainder of um of the work done during the approval phase for the project. So assuming that makes sense, we need to get a uh a motion to approve the invoice. And the amount of uh seven hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents for places associates for the review work.
I'll make that motion.
Here in the first, do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Here in the first and the second discussion.
I just want to uh confirm these numbers here uh from my perspective, if you don't mind.
Yep, absolutely. Um we have.
So the original balance, can we go through this information?
It's a little confusing, it's a little confusing the way it presents it.
Yes, I I saw it originally and it was like, I have a lot of minus numbers here and then a lot of plus numbers here. And it was like, okay, the amount billed was two thousand sixty-five. The amount remaining is in the negative, the value completed, so I'm I'm a tad confused, can you?
Let me give you a different picture of this. His original estimate was three thousand dollars.
Three thousand.
His his first invoice was the fourteen eighty and the thirty-seven dollar line items, project review and project setup.
Okay.
So that's already been billed, already been paid.
Okay.
The this invoice is line items for three hundred and sixty-five and for four hundred and for eight dollars and fifty cents in photocopies.
And what about the five hundred forty-eight then? I don't, I didn't hear you mention that one for the meetings.
Five forty-eight, um. So five forty-eight was the first meeting. That was that was in the first bill.
So was the. So was that paid?
Yes.
Okay, so we've paid a total of two thousand sixty-five?
No, we've we've paid. Yes, yeah, it must be something like that, yep.
Do we have um do we have funds deposited sufficiently from the applicant to come about?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we add the I'm and I apologize, I'm still confused. So if we add the seven sixty-five and the two thousand sixty-five dollars and fifty cents, that gives us the.
Twenty-eight thirty.
Twenty-eight thirty?
Yeah.
So I I I still don't understand where the seven seventy-five comes from. So I'm sorry, the seven seventy-three fifty comes from. And I'm not suggesting this is wrong, I'm just trying to understand it. I'm I'm I I'm by the way, I'm using my calc- the just the phone's calculated here, so. Just to let people know, this is this is not that I'm making phone calls or anything like that or texting anybody.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't actually give us the number of hours or billing right here, but what he's what he said is that follow-up review and the second meeting amount of seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So two zero sixty-five point five plus seven sixty-five, right? Oops, two zero sixty-five point five plus seven sixty-five. So that's two eight three. I I I and I apologize, I still don't see how the seven seventy-three comes in. Where is that itemized? Is that's is that on a different page that we just didn't get?
So.
Seven hundred and sixty-five dollars plus eight dollars and fifty cents expenses.
So that that's what it is. The expenses, they're a different category from the other stuff. So like so when when you subtract the two thousand sixty-five.
Oh, okay.
The table is the table is all time.
Okay, so that's the current, I I now I understand. I see it now because I see the headings current va- current invoice. So the current invoice is the three hundred and sixty-five plus the four hundred plus the eight fifty.
Plus a fifty, yeah.
Okay, got it, okay. Then in that case, no more discussion.
Yeah, well, that that I get to decide that, but.
I have to. No, no, I I I maybe I understand it. That's what I meant.
Well, no, that 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 makes sense. Yeah, what I was looking at too is like, well, those don't foot, uh but that's why because it's the two columns don't foot because the expenses have to come off too.
Okay, I just I just couldn't make heads and tails of this here.
Alright, any any further discussion on it?
No.
Alright, calling a vote.
Dak, aye.
Shagger, aye.
Monroe, aye. The uh the invoice is approved. Um so moving down on the agenda, um Nate, I don't know if you wanted to talk more about the uh the streamlining, the site plan review process, but I think we beat that pretty heavily so far.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see how the DLTA kind of chart works out and then over time, over the next few months, if this goal is not progressing in any meaningful way, I'll come back.
Okay. So moving down the list is uh item five, which is uh planning board clerk role. So um Mark is actually gonna be leaving us at the end of the month. Which uh thank you, Mark, for your time here. You've been a tremendous help. We are definitely gonna miss you.
Absolutely.
Uh so I was asked to put this item on the agenda um for discussion. So um I put it on the item on the agenda for discussion. Uh I, I speaking as a singular member, uh not as the chair, don't particularly love the idea of us being member clerked uh just because we're so subject to litigation. Um other than the select board. Well, and and even probably the select board, we're most likely to generate litigation based upon decisions that we make. So having somebody professional uh to our meeting minutes, I think makes a lot of sense and I think we should insist upon that being funded from the town. Uh we might end up with a gap though. Um so I think we're gonna have to ask uh Mark and Nate about how that's gonna go because we can't get, can't get a year and a half behind on our minutes like we were before. So um I guess uh let's incorporate the town administrator in this discussion.
Thank you and thank you to Mark Cressage for his one year of for for his year of service here. He.
Still haven't get it.
No, you don't. Mark Creski, who who did a fabulous amount of work and was truly helpful to me during my very, very early days here. So thank you to him and I wish him the best of luck. However, with the applicant pool to fill that role has been weak to say, to put it highly. So I am exploring other opportunities, including speaking with Rutland about buying, not buying, sharing approximately ten to twelve hours of their town planner, but their town planner they just made an offer to today. So he has to make sure that he has a town planner before we can really talk about that. If between now and then, a applicant with the necessary experience or qualifications comes in and applies, we will obviously consider them for the role as is. But I think we were a little spoiled over the last year to have somebody that has the certifications of a planner serving in the land use role, land use clerk role. I was looking forward to working further, but he found a golden opportunity, so we can't stop him. Where they say if you love something, let them fly or something like that. But so.
Is he going to Rutland?
No.
That's the punchline.
I I floated that when they posted the, when they posted the position. But so for now, that's not really the best answer. I can speak to the existing clerks to see if any of them would be interested in making a couple extra bucks to write minutes, but the bandwidth of clerks that currently work here is incredibly limited at this time because they're all filling at least two roles. So I would hope that you would consider having a member clerk for at least the interim to stop yourself from creating a backlog. It is my hope that regardless of whether we do it the way it is or a different way, someone on staff will be writing your minutes. But I cannot speak to a person or position at this time.
Do you have any idea as to when Rutland may be coming back to you?
I talk to him every day, uh cause we're friends outside of the world of town administration. But he needs to get a a yes from the person that he offered a job to and and then we.
I understand, but then, was that time limited? Was that time boxed?
I'm gonna check in with him on Monday. We we hung up the phone today with that agreement that we were checking.
Okay. So this is absolutely fresh off of the press. Okay, got it.
Yeah, and we both know that if that is something we're going to be looking into, it needs to start moving through planning board, select board prior, sooner rather than later. So.
Yeah.
So the the challenge that, well, I guess they're just better define the challenge a little bit. There's really a few things that we're talking about here. There's the clerk role in terms of actual minute taking. Um which I still don't think works great as being a member role for for us. Um but I think we should also just push off to the next meeting if it becomes an actual problem. The next thing is is the actual administrative clerking for the planning board, which is the person who takes applications, makes sure all the stuff's in. That's one level of work that has to happen to kind of support land use. And then the other level is um is what Mark has been awesome at helping us at, which we haven't had for a long time. Which is the actual like staff planner level of assistance, like somebody who can actually answer questions for folks that call in. Uh somebody can actually look at a map. And if there's a question of like, well, is this even a public way? Like, well, I can figure this out pretty quick. Let me look at some documents. Like that that's a different level from somebody who's just acting as an administrative clerk for us. And from a strategic perspective, I think we need some of that as a town to kind of fix some of the issues that have slowly grown over time in our zoning. Um we certainly need somebody from an administrative standpoint because I I can say that from what it was like in uh when we were going through the Vertex application where uh this essentially became a nearly full-time, part-time job for me. I am not willing to do that again. And I don't think there's a single member on the board that is uh willing to step into those shoes. So we're definitely gonna need that that kind of administrative support. And we're we're kind of lulled into a little bit of um and, well, we've been in a little bit below. Like we haven't had a an actual application since industrial tower. And be it the uncertainty in the economy, we're certainly not out of land quite yet. Uh but uh but folks just haven't been looking into it in major projects in the town the last few months. It's gonna happen again. We are gonna get them. And then uh we know that there's gonna have to be co-located equipment for both of the towers. And I did hear from Vertex, they are expecting to come in for their permit within the next month to to actually start construction, which means the special permits are gonna be following soon after that. That's a lot of administrative work. So um we we probably have a month or two of breathing room here. But for all we know, a bunch of applications could drop on Monday. We don't know for sure. But likely to be probably a little bit of breathing room. But um I guess at at this point, um I don't think we have anything to make a motion or take a vote on. Um I think, well, we're just gonna have to work with the town administrator through the chair on this to try to come up with the best solution that the town will be willing to fund. Um and uh I will uh I will make it clear, assuming that the rest of the board supports the position, uh that there isn't really anybody who has the willingness or the bandwidth to step into uh the kind of heavy administration that's been demanded of us in um last year. So we we really get the support from the town on it. Anybody have anything to add to that?
No, I disagree. Full heartedly agree. I mean, at this point in time, we need somebody like that. It's the only the work.
I don't, I don't disagree, like.
No, but I, so the the only, my only comment is this here. If we if we started to do something like just even no taking on our end, um the issue liability is one, but I think also this is that it kind of relieves some of the pressure. I'd rather keep the pressure on. We need, we need a solution. And it's lamentably, we're going to be tossing it back over the fence to you. I'm sorry.
I don't think it ever made it quite over the fence, but.
Well, we're we're we're, we were good at bowling that ball back to you.
Yeah. Yeah. No, and I will work with the chair to make sure that whatever conversations or applicants we end up getting works for everyone.
Yeah, I um just to add a little more to Fran's last point and and echo it um to to the rest of the board. I have no intention of being accommodating here. This is our turn to be um to be sticks in the mud. And uh it's ultimately, it's not a situation that Nate put us into. He's just kind of stuck here in the game of physical chairs. But um but he gets to deal with us being a pain in the butt on this.
And I have made it kind of in, it's not a policy written anywhere, but it's an internal procedure of mine to, even though the employees are direct directly working for my office and the select board to involve the various other boards and individuals in their interviews or in the discussions about how the office works. So that will be one hundred percent a conversation that either you as a board or Chair Monroe will be part of when we have something to talk about.
Quick question, is is Rutland the only uh place that you may be able to get some a a resource like the one that you've discussed? Or are there other towns that may, that are joining towns? Again, the logistics is important because of the travel.
I didn't, there's a backup town in my mind, but I didn't want to reach out to them until the current iron that I had in the fire was a no. So basically, I, Westminster also just got a new planner. And I don't see them being anti a couple of bucks for ten hours.
There's also a a challenge that I think comes up here because partnering with somebody who's bigger like we did with Gardner, I don't think works for something like this.
Yeah.
You you don't get somebody who understands the small town issues. It has to be like Westminster or Rutland or somebody on the same scale.
And even they are much larger than we are.
Yeah. Well, and and even with that, I I don't know that it makes a difference if somebody, the person who does it is part of MR a MRPC town or CMRPC town. There probably is an advantage of having them be part of the CMRPC town. Uh just because they had, they get a different set of ideas and a different set of um literally a different letter announcing grant opportunities. So it doesn't hurt to 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 look at.
On the positive about working with somebody. And I don't really know how to say this. In its, Mark is the example that I'm going to use. We would not be taking steps back. Like it would, there would be a, if we partnered with another community, there would be a certified community development and planning professional working with you guys. So and that's what I'm looking to do. I'm trying to negotiate in some administrative time as well, but that's a conversation for for a later day once they actually have a planner.
All right, any other thoughts or questions on on this matter? We're all roughly the same page. Okay, so uh matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. Um yeah, there was one. At the meeting just before this, we had the agricultural accessory committee and they voted to approve the recommendation and forward it to the planning board and uh the select board and the EDC. So that's gonna be coming up on our agenda and uh I can't overstate how excited I am about that. Like I, I'm just tired. That's why I'm not up professing now. But it is, it is the literally the biggest change or not biggest change, it is literally the most helpful thing to business and and the kinds of businesses that we want to see around here ever since our zoning was created. Like it is a potential game changer in a good way where I think it balances the needs of Hubbardston, staying Hubbardston and allowing businesses of the type that we would like to see uh be able to operate and help us out with our tax base. So um uh I think it's the least offensive opportunity we have to increase our business base. So I'm I'm pretty excited about it and I think everybody will will find something they like about it when it comes up to us for discussion. Uh as Nate mentioned, we did find some money to get our consultant to help us out with reviewing this. Um it's gonna end up on the spring town meeting warrant. Um there was an opportunity to rush and do it for the fall, but it didn't make sense. And with the spirited debate that was going on about uh town meeting in general, I didn't think it was a good opportunity to even approach the conversation of putting a zoning amendment on the um on the warrant. So uh we decided to let that ride till the spring and I think we're all gonna be happy that we did because it's gonna give us some more time to engage with the public.
It's not a ton of money, but use it slowly, be smart about it, like just make it last a couple of years.
Absolutely. Uh anybody else have anything else on matters not reasonably expected by chair? Uh any additional public comment for anything could even be on the agenda at this point?
I want to personally thank you, Mark, for your services you've rendered to this uh team and group here. It's been uh what a change. So uh we'll, you'll be, you'll be missed.
Yeah, well, thanks. It was, it was a good year. We uh we sat, we sat them, sat them some things straight.
Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're, the the help that you did, uh the, all the work that you did tremendously uh helped our and and facilitated the work that we did. So it's been a big change. Thank you. And more importantly, you caught us up when it comes to all the minutes. That was like amazing. Uh so.
Kind of. You still got a black hole back there, but oh well.
But I. I I think uh one of the things that it it kind of gets lost because it's boring. But how big it was to actually get our bylaws to match what they're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Like the amount of work that went into that over a period of years and for Mark to close that out and get it the last mile uh this last year. So we're actually starting in a place where we know we're working on our actual bylaws. Which the the fact that we had a couple of years where we weren't even sure that we're working on the real version, like that is such a huge improvement and we're in such a better place because we have that foundation. So uh that that is uh is worth a ton of recognition, but unfortunately, I don't think the public will ever recognize it because it's terribly boring. But it it made a huge difference to what we're gonna be able to do as a town. And also just fairness to people coming in and apply for stuff to actually have our bylaws online.
So quick question, are, uh uh is our um with regards to this here, are the, is our website now updated with the latest, greatest bylaw? I'm asking this here because when I look at the zoning bylaws, I still see something that says June seventh, twenty twenty-two. And I'm at, I'm just not sure that they, and maybe not all the links have been updated, so.
No, I mean, that is your current bylaw. It's two of last year.
Okay.
We haven't received the most recent changes from the current.
We, we haven't gotten the yearbook.
Yeah, because of the HGA, uh, that's okay. Very good. So then that's fine. Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that was, there was stuff that was ten years behind there.
Oh, yeah.
So um.
Bad.
So anything else? All right, well, how about a motion? Maybe we can stay here all night if that wants to be.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Don't look at this.
I will make a motion.
First or second?
I will, I will, I will second that motion.
Non-debatable, calling a vote.
I.
Dak, aye.
I thought you were right.
Monroe, aye. We are adjourned at eight o'clock sharp.